The mayor was not able to be here today. In late days is not able to be here. But we did have a forum, so we will proceed on with the agenda. First of all, we've got Greg Dow here to give an invocation. So take off. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'd like to offer Psalm 46 this afternoon as our prayer. Given our polarized political culture right now, the things going on with the coronavirus, people have lost loved ones, they've experienced economic loss, maybe even health issues, and then just racial tensions. A lot is going on in our country, around the globe, and in our communities. So I'd like to offer Psalm 46 as our prayer today. If you would pray with me, please. God is our refuge and strength, an ever-present help in trouble. Therefore, we will not fear, though the earth give way and the mountains fall into the heart of the sea, though its waters roar and foam and the mountains quake with their surging. There is a river whose streams make glad the city of God, the holy place where the most God dwells. God is within her; she will not fall. God will help her at the break of day. Nations are in uproar, kingdoms fall; God lifts His voice and the earth melts. The Lord Almighty is with us; the God of Jacob is our fortress. Come and see what the Lord has done, the desolations He has brought on the earth. He makes wars cease to the ends of the earth; He breaks the bow and shatters the spear; He burns the shields with fire. He says, "Be still and know that I am God." Be still and know that I am God. I will be exalted among the nations; I will be exalted in the earth. The Lord Almighty is with us; the God of Jacob is our fortress. Amen.
Greg Dow, thank you for coming today and joining us. Wonderful prayer. Next item on the agenda is public address. Do we have someone that wants to speak to us?
There are none.
Okay. We'll proceed on to item one on the agenda. Item one, A, Review Agenda Item for Regular Meeting and Attachments. Is there anything in the consent items that needs to come off and be considered in the non-consent items?
Mayor Protem, I do not have anything.
I don't either.
Okay. So let's go to item one, B, Coronavirus Updates.
Mayor Protem Smith, we've got quite a, at least a heavy, heavy amount of information to report, maybe not a huge quantity, but we definitely need to talk about the situation in our hospitals, the situation with regard to the governor's executive order, GA 32, and the fact that we are now in an area of high hospitalization. So without any further ado, we'll go ahead and hand it to Casey Stotin, our Director of Public Health, to walk us through it and answer any questions that council might have. Casey?
Thank you. Again, glad to be here with you today. Going to talk through the numbers, and then, like Jared said, we do have a number of things to talk about, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. So as of today, there were a total of 13,225 cases of COVID-19 reported in Potter and Randall Counties. 8,007 reported in Potter County and 5,218 in Randall County. We have a total of 9,557 recoveries and 156 deaths here in our community. That leaves us with 3,512 active cases. One month ago, we did have a large increase of positive cases from the Neale Unit. On Monday, those positive cases rolled off of the active case roster. So while we did have a large decrease in our active cases, this was expected related to that mass testing at the Neale Unit. We're still seeing a very high increase in positive cases each day. Today was the record high for our new, our new cases for the, for a single reporting day, at 331 new cases reported. In fact, nine of the high, of the 10 highest reporting days have occurred since October the 8th. Again, each of the cases do represent a unique individual. The rolling seven-day positivity average for Potter and Randall Counties is at 20% and the positivity rate at the drive-through testing site is at 40%. The five-day positive case average is 200 new cases per day. Local hospitalizations include 214 individuals admitted at BSA and Northwest and 23 additional patients at the VA. And sorry, I've got to pull out my calculator real quick because I was still getting information right as we were going on air. So that's, that leaves us with 237 people hospitalized in our community with COVID-19 in all three of our hospitals. The hospitalization rate is right at 6%. Adult bed utilization is at 83%. ICU utilization is at 83% and ventilator utilization is around 52.5%. Both of our hospitals do express concern about implementing internal surge plans, exceeding designated COVID units, and having to move into other units within their facilities. They also express concern about staffing fatigue, staffing shortages, and just literally physical space shortages, like running out of beds and other physical space. The Panhandle Rack, the Regional Advisory Council, who support the hospitals, have filled a number of requests for staffing with over 290 nurses and 25 respiratory therapists who've been sent to our two-area hospitals to support them during this surge. And in fact, more requests have been made just today. Today is one week at Level Red. At Level Red, conditions do remain consistent with Level Red as at least two of the metrics for Level Red have been met. In fact, all four of those metrics have been met. We will reissue another Level Red tomorrow morning and reevaluate in two weeks. Prevention is the only thing that will bend our curve here in Amarillo. GA 32's hospitalization rate for the 25-county Panhandle Rack region has been over 15% for nine consecutive days now. Yesterday, our region was at 18.99% and the past four days have been over 18%. That pushes us into that area of high hospitalizations that Jared mentioned. So any of those businesses such as restaurants and other retail stores that were opened at 75% are now back down to 50%. And our hospitals have had to postpone or cancel any elective surgeries, which is a really big deal and a concern for their patients. The Public Health Drive-Thru Testing Site does remain operational. With the inclement weather today, our team opened the drive-thru test site at 10:00 a.m. this morning, but individuals can still call 378-6300 to be screened and directed to the testing site. I do want to express my appreciation to Dr. Milton, Dr. Wise, Dr. Lamontier, Dr. Yellman-Chili, and Dr. Bradford for their expertise and participation during last night's expert conversation on KAMR. I want to highlight some of the concerns that they brought up. The hospitals are stressed with staffing, fatigue, physical space, and the difficult decisions about postponing elective procedures. They also highlighted that prevention efforts that we have talked about for so long now and how those prevention efforts help decrease the load at the hospital. They discussed myths and facts and how serious COVID-19 is. And so I appreciate their taking time away from seeing their patients at the hospitals and their duties to talk to our community. So thank you to those physicians. And thank you to all of the physicians and the nurses and the teams at the hospitals and doctors' offices who are working around the clock to care for our patients. And that's all I have today.
I just wanted to throw something in before we jump in any questions for, for Casey. There are a number of people that have different opinions about coronavirus, about masks and all those things. There's a lot of people that admittedly, and I'm one of them, who doesn't like wearing a mask, although I'm wearing one right now and can throw it up at any moment. People debate whether or not it's necessary, whether or not coronavirus itself is something worth the level of response that we have given it. The fact of the matter is, and if you watched the presentation from our doctors from all of our different hospitals yesterday, this is a very real and immediate challenge that we face. And one thing that all of the epidemiologists will tell you is that there is a very simple fix that doesn't require medicine that tastes bad and doesn't require a painful shot or anything else. It's just wearing your mask. Wearing your face mask prevents you from giving it to someone else. That is the function of a mask. It doesn't keep you safe; it keeps others safe from you. The best way to show that you respect someone when you're in their presence is to wear the mask. The best way to show that you don't respect someone is to not wear your mask. And that sounds very artfully said or said to get a certain response, but it's very true. It's simple. If we wear our masks, we can retard the growth of coronavirus in our area, which will allow our businesses to open, which will allow us to resume some sense of normalcy. If we have this continued growth that we have right now, our hospitals are going to run out of space. It's not a if, it's a, it's a fact. If we continue growing like we are right now, our hospitals will run out of space. We will have to restrict large gatherings and things like that. We won't have a choice. It won't be an option left up to us. So we can together do some things that are very easy to do and, and do not infringe upon people's freedom that will keep us all safer. It's, it boils down to our masks and washing hands and keeping our surfaces clean. These are things that we can all do. So I apologize for, for waxing philosophical for a moment. That's a distillation of comments from our medical director, Dr. Milton, and both of our chief medical officers at our hospitals. So Dr. Wise and Dr. Lamontier. So this is not me, you know, waxing philosophical as a city manager. This is me saying things that are the number-one things that our, our number-one medical authorities in the region have said. So with that said, what questions do we have for Casey?
I just want to make a couple of comments, too. I watched it also last night, Casey. I thought they did an incredibly great job. I was very grateful that Dr. Yellman-Chili, and I can't remember, Bradford, Bladford? Both of these guys are on the front lines, ER and ICU physicians helping take care of all of these patients. I thought it was very insightful. I appreciated the fact that it seemed like the moderators kept coming back around and they kept getting the exact same answer, what can we do as a community? And it probably, in that 30-minute time span, they probably said it 10 or 15 times, "Wear a mask." And I think the last thing Dr. Milton actually said was, "If we wear masks, we'll bend the curve." And that was the ultimate response of it. Another thing that is kind of interesting is I saw this morning that the University of Kansas, their economist at the University of Kansas, released this study that basically said those communities, and I'm not advocating for a mask mandate, but that's the easiest way for them to make a comparison for people wearing masks and people not wearing masks. But in Kansas and several counties where they do have a mask mandate, they saw that the number of cases, the number of deaths, the number of hospitalizations dropped by 50% by wearing a mask. And so it, I think that, that right there says the smartest thing that we can do is wear a mask. Just wear a mask. And that makes it very easy for us to cut the curve in half, flatten the curve out, whatever you want to say. And so now then, we're seeing studies begin to come out that are, I, I know that when this first started, it was all over the board, but now it's pretty well solidified that this is the one major thing that affects the spread of the disease. And so Casey, I appreciate all that you're doing. I know that you're putting in some long hours and you're having to do a lot of things. You are truly appreciated. You guys are doing a great job. And I can at least speak for my family. We're eternally grateful to you and to the medical community for the efforts that they're making to try and blunt this curve.
We have a good team at Public Health.
And I just wanted to make a few comments as well. I certainly echo Councilmember Sowers' comments. I just want to say to, to our citizens of Amarillo that when we started down this road, I knew of individuals that had COVID-19. Now I know individuals who have COVID-19. And so I want to say that to date, of course, we have lost exactly 156 individuals in the Amarillo area to COVID-19. And our hospitalization rate is 18.99%. So please think about the situation that our last responders are experiencing when caring for our loved ones. As a friend and a citizen, I'm pleading with you to honor and protect our healthcare workers who are exhausted in caring for an overwhelming number of patients in our hospitals and our last responders caring for our loved ones. Remember that if you and I were to need a hospital, a hospital bed, God forbid, because of a heart attack or a car accident, a bed might not be available locally. So the decisions that you and I make today and every day for the next month will affect our hospital's situation and prove, how it improves. So what does it, this mean? It means always wearing a mask when you're out, not joining gatherings, social distancing, and washing our hands for at least 20 seconds. This is serious. So I ask you to join me and help us to bend the curve. Thank you. And I, well, Casey, and all that your staff is doing.
Thank you, Casey, and Dr. Sauer and Frida Powell on the comments you made. I also watched the program last night. It was very educational. And one point that the doctors made at each hospital is the number of people that are there to service those that are in the hospital. There's quite a few that need to be quarantined. So that number is being stressed a lot. So we need to wash our hands, wear a mask, and stay social distance from other people. Any other comments from anyone here?
Mayor Protem, if I could, I want to add one more thing. The, I, I know that people look at our fatality rate, they look at the hospitalization rates, and they draw all these different conclusions, but the personal cost of losing our, our friends and family members to coronavirus is substantial. And I want to share a story. It's not a, a made-up story. I have a person that I know, knew, was a World War II veteran, was in his 90s. So people say, immediately say, "Well, he was older," you know, so, you know, and they discount. But this is a healthy person who died from coronavirus, flew two dozen missions over the hardest targets in Germany, was shot down, and was a POW, made it through all that, losing toes and frostbite and, and other things, and dies to coronavirus. And then a spouse dies three or four days later, not from coronavirus. As we see so, so frequently, when you have someone that's been married 80 years, when one spouse dies, the, the next one dies very frequently. It's a real cost to our community, a loss to our entire nation, situations like that. And that's just one example. I know that so many people around our community, over 150, can share the same stories. But if we take the mask serious, if we take steps to protect our neighbors serious, we can reduce our infection rates and thereby reduce our hospitalization rates, thereby allow our businesses to operate at a higher level, which is economically good for all of us. It's difficult to get everyone to appreciate the seriousness of the situation and the ease with which we can fix it. That's an added story that, that wasn't necessary for this conversation, but I think it benefits the conversation. Mayor Protem?
Any other comments on the coronavirus update? Okay, well, let's move to the next item. We've got reports on two committees or task forces. I happen to be the one assigned to the Environmental Task Force. They met this last week. They had a long discussion about water conservation education. They're willing to educate the public about conserving every drop that counts. Want to update the Facebook page on every drop counts. There's a rain sensor rebate that is available for any citizen. If they put a sensor so that if it rains, your sprinkler doesn't come on, and nobody's applied for that rebate. So they're willing to educate the public about that. There's a lot of discussion about maybe implementing scheduled water days, April through September. No decisions made, they're just having discussion. But once, uh, once they decide what they want to recommend, then they would take this to various entities, like the Parks and Recreation Department, AISD, Canyon, it had been a scooterist, Realtors Association, Builders Association, to get feedback on what they might be proposing to the council. So they don't have anything to report yet, but they're having all kinds of discussion about that. Any questions or comments on the Environmental Task Force? That's all I have.
Yeah, I've got one real quick for you, Howard. So the, the deal about the rebate, how do we go about following up on that? Because I put a RACIO controller on my house, on my mom's house and on my office, and all three of those, they go to the internet, and it's already happened multiple times, that if it's a freeze, it doesn't water. If it rains enough, it doesn't water. And so does that qualify for this rebate?
I'm the one that can answer that. Blair Snow, I think, is on here. Can you answer that?
Hello. Actually, Jonathan Gresham, the Director of Utilities, is on this meeting, and he would be able to explain that better than I can.
Yes, hi, Councilman Sauer. Yes, you can. It's on the website, in the utility billing website, on the City of Amarillo website. And you can either get it through there, it's a form that you fill out and you send in the utility billing, and then they will get you a rebate up to $50 for each one of those rain sensors that are put in.
Okay, so in this case, it's really not a rain sensor? It's just, it basically, the controller hooks up to the internet, and so it's, it's actually run by the, by the Weather Service in some ways. You know, they go to wherever, weather.com, and they get all of their, they download all the stuff, and that's how that actually ends up working. So since it's not actually a rain sensor or a freeze sensor, does it still count?
We can, we can definitely look into that. Right now, I think the wording does say rain sensor, so, but I, I do think that would count. Because what we're looking for is, is not irrigating while it's raining or while it's freezing or cold weather like this. And so I, I think that would count.
Okay. Well, I'm going to put in a shameless plug for RACIO, if anybody out there in public has ever heard about that. This controller actually also has a portion on it where it waters, it may go through the cycle two or three times, and there is never an overflow into the street from my yard, not since we put that in at my mom's house, at my house, or at the office. And so it is the most efficient way of watering a yard I have ever seen in my life, and it is not a terribly expensive controller either. And it's very easy. An average person could probably replace their controller by using it. And then if the rebate's available, that makes it even more worthwhile.
Yes. And that's what we're looking for, is not wasting water. So that's perfect.
Comment. Any other comment on, on that Environmental Task Force? Okay, the next report is Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee, and I serve on that committee. And we met the last two, three days, I guess it's yesterday, and we had a lot of discussion. No decisions were made, but we had an update on Wolfland Traffic Study. There's been questions because of an accident or two that have happened in the Wolfland area, so the city's studying, studying that geographic area. We got an update on Tech, from Tech dot, on Amarillo Boulevard Traffic Study, and they're planning to put in some hawks, I believe they're called, on Amarillo Boulevard, probably three of them, but it'll be in the next year before that happens. There was an item dealing with sidewalk development and connectivity that was tabled because one member from the committee, brought that to the committee, was not able to participate. And then there's discussion on the pedestrian bicycle safety portion of the Parks Master Plan. Angela Harney is chairman of this committee, and she serves also on the Parks Committee. So that's a good connection where we can, like, our committee, the Pedestrian Bicycle Committee, wants to connect the parks. The Parks Department is just mainly interested in the parks, but we need to get more of these trails around the city connected. So that's all I have. Any question about that? If not, then we'll go, go to the next items, and that's the consent items. I asked earlier if you were okay with things staying on there, so I would entertain a motion to approve those items.
Mayor Protem, would, would we like to recover, I mean, sorry, would we like to go over item D?
We can go over any item if you'd like.
No, I'm sorry, I, you skipped over item D.
Oh, I'm sorry. Future agenda items. Do the council have anything they want to put on the next agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. Now, the consent items.
Yes, Mayor Protem, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a consent items. All of you in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes 3-0. Okay, now, non-consent items. Item A, Public Caring and Consideration Ordinance 7888. Turn us over to the city manager.
Right. Mayor Protem, item 3A is a redistrict, I'm sorry, a rezoning item. And to present the item, we have Andrew Freeman, our Managing Director of Planning and Development Services. Andrew?
Yes, sir. So this item is in North Amarillo. It is located at Loop 335 and Pavillard Drive. The applicant is requesting a rezon from agricultural and R3, Residential District 3, to a consolidated residential district 3 zoning category. The intent is to continue development of the Fox Hollow subdivision. The adjacent land uses consist of agricultural- The adjacent land uses consist of agricultural to the northeast and south, and residential district one and three to the west. They are surrounded by existing single-family detached homes, as well as a church to the west, and then surrounded by undeveloped lots in all other directions. The future land use designation has a couple of different categories. It has the majority is general residential, and then the southern corner next to the intersection has a small section of general commercial currently designated. The applicants are Rob Christie for Triple Financing, Inc., and the Planning Zoning Commission heard this item on their October fifth agenda, and it was approved six oh and recommended for council to consider. This is a snapshot of the current zoning. You can see in the highlighted hatched area is the point nine point seven five acres up for rezoning. The area I spoke of, that's the land use of general commercial, is closer to this area here at the intersection. So it's only a small portion that has that designation. Based on staff's review and planning zoning's consideration, the item, they felt the R three zoning was appropriate this area, appropriate for this area. It's a denser development, and along this area, the section line makes sense for that denser development. And as the area continues to develop, it would protect the lower density residential that might end up in the inside of this tract. To your right, you can see the aerial for the area with the existing Fox Hollow subdivision, and its highlights to the right is where they're planning to do their next phase. With that said, this is the first reading of this item in a public hearing, so welcome any questions you might have, or leave straight to the public hearing.
Any questions before we have the public hearing? We'll open the public hearing now for anyone that wants to speak on this topic.
If we have anybody on the Zoom today to speak on this topic, if you will press the raise hand button at this time, or dial star nine from your telephone. Mayor Protem, I do not see anybody wishing to speak.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve this.
Uh, Mayor Protem, I move to adopt ordinance number seventy eight eighty-eight in the vicinity of East St. Francis Avenue, Loop three thirty-five, and Pavillard Drive.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes three zero. Okay, item, non-consent item B, city manager.
Hi, Mayor, thank you very much. We've got another public hearing and consideration of ordinance. This is for a alcohol variance in the vicinity of Thirty Fourth Street, and the applicant is a pizza place we might be familiar with, Pizzeria Nomad, moving to a physical location from a mobile location. So to present the item, we have Anthony Spinell, Enviro, Enviro, Anthony?
Thank you, city manager. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, city council. I will be presenting a, a variance request for Pizzeria Nomad this afternoon. Let me get this slideshow going here real quick. So Pizzeria Nomad is a pizza location that we all are very, very familiar with, very fantastic pizza, located, they have a physical location about Thirty Fourth and Georgia, right next to Coronado Elementary School. Let's see if we can get this. There we go. The pizzeria, like I said, is located at twenty-six forty-eight Southwest Thirty Fourth. They have applied for an on-premise consumption of beer and wine alcoholic beverage license. They applied for that on September fifteenth of two thousand and twenty, and were ultimately denied due to the distance to A I S D Coronado Elementary School. That distance is roughly seventeen point five feet. Distance to a public school is measured property line to property line using the as a crow flies method, and in accordance with the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Code. They are located in an area zone, general retail, which does allow for restaurants with on-premise consumption. It does not allow for facilities that have greater than fifty percent of alcohol sales, so bars. General retail does not allow for bars. The surrounding area has three legal alcoholic beverage licenses within that same three hundred foot setback, and I will give you a detail on what, what those are. So first one is Toot and Totem, is thirty-three ten Wimberly Road. It was issued October fourth of nineteen eighty-five, which was prior to the adoption of the city's regulations, and it is again roughly seventeen point five feet from property line to property line. The second is Thirty Fourth Street Discount, twenty-five fourteen Southwest Thirty Fourth, it was issued December twenty-ninth of two thousand and four. It is roughly twenty-nine feet property line to property line. I do not have any information available on how or why this one was issued. The third is Toot and Totem, thirty-three twenty South Georgia. Council did grant a variance for this location November twenty-eighth of two thousand and seventeen, and it is roughly eighty feet from property line to property line of this All, all three that I mentioned here that were issued are all grandfathered for any future requests. So once you issue an alcoholic beverage license, it is subsequently grandfathered for all future requests. Once issued, that A B O, switching from on-premise to off-premise is allowed. So as you can see here, all three of the locations that I mentioned are all grab-and-go locations. They all sell containers for off-premise consumption. And any point in the future, if they so cho- chose to have an on-premise consumption license, they would be allowed to have that by law. Property history, this exact property that we are presenting in front of you today, had a variance request on October third of two thousand and three that failed, council with a two-three vote. This was Jorge's Mexican Restaurant, was denied back in two thousand and three for setback to the same Coronado Elementary School, which was seventeen point five feet. A I S D was notified of the requested variance and is not in support of its issuance. Did speak to A I S D, and they do have a standing policy to not support any variance requests for distant setbacks. It is important to note that there is no public notification or public hearing process required for alcoholic beverage variance. Variances, unlike zoning, where they have to notify all the surrounding properties, the only property that is required to be notified is, is the one in question, so A I S D. And histor- historically, there has not been an approval of an alcoholic beverage, alcoholic beverage license variance when the affected entity is not in support. Now, nothing in law would prevent it, just speaking to the history of the ones we've Now, city council may consider a ver, consider allowing a variance if they find that the enforcement of the regulation is one of the following. It is not in the best interest of the public. It constitute a wa, constitutes a waste or inefficient use of land or other resources, creates an undue hardship on the applicant for a license or permit, does not serve its intended purpose, is not effective or necessary, or is for any reason after considering the following health and safety or welfare of the public, the equities of the situation not in the best interest of the community. So you are able to grant a variance to this requirement if you find one of these is true. Here is an overview of the location in question. The starred location is, is the pizzeria. The highlighted Coronado Elementary School is just to the north of that, and the little green dots are the current legal alcoholic beverage licenses with, that are within that three hundred foot setback to a school. We do have, we do have the owner of Pizzeria Nomad, Liberty Powers, on the line. He, if, if, I believe he has something he would like to say. Liberty?
Hi. Uh, yes, so we're just a family corner pizzeria. We feel like our guests would be better served if we were able to have craft beer and wine on site. We're, we close at eight P M. daily, so we don't keep late hours, and we're committed to not being a nuisance, obviously.
Appreciate that, Liberty. Now, council, I would entertain any questions if you, if you have those, we'd be happy to answer them.
So Anthony, I've got a question that really may not pertain so much to Pizzeria Nomad, but, so it kind of goes back to, uh, actually the Toot and Totem one. So when Toot and Totem leaves the current building that they're in, and they move to the new building, which is further away, does that mean that that building can still sell alcohol whoever comes into that building?
That's very true. Any, anybody that comes into the, the location that Toot and Totem left, their old location on Wimberly Road, will have al, will have the approval to have alcohol license. So it could be on-premise or off, could be a restaurant, could be another package store. Anybody will have automatic approval. That property is grandfathered.
Forever. So whatever decision we make, this property, if we decide that we allow that, then that means that this property, regardless of who moves into that property, now has the ability to serve alcohol.
Well, it's a little bigger than that, too. It's not just, it's not just the footprint of the, the restaurant. It would be, and Anthony, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, I understand it, that it would be the entire strip. Is that correct, Anthony?
That is correct, sir. So alcohol licenses are, are granted to the property. That one, and it's, and it's the property under the control of one owner. So that entire strip center, including Toot and Totem, and including the subway in front of it, is all one property. So issuing that alcohol license or variance for this location would consider that entire property wet moving forward.
So, okay, so go back and help me understand this. The Toot and Totem currently has that, but it's not considered?
It, it, it received that approval prior to the adoption of the rules. So we didn't, we didn't have to necessarily approve that because it, it was there prior to us even having a rule.
Okay. So does that mean? So let me ask you this. So now then, let's go to the other property, the package store. So does that mean that whole strip side of the strip center can have alcohol in it?
Or is it? The, the side to the east, the two thousand and four location?
Yes, sir.
I believe so, and there's only one location over there. It's, it's only one convenience store. It's not in a strip center.
Oh, so it's by itself? Okay, I couldn't remember for sure.
Okay. Okay, so in the strip center where Pizzeria Nomad is currently located, so for this entire property, what we're saying here is, is that anyone who moves into that property, or any one of those areas, can have alcohol on the premises. Is that correct?
If we grant, if, if council would grant that variance, that entire strip center would be allowed to have alcohol moving forward.
Okay. So does that mean that a bar could move into that strip center as well?
No, ma'am. Let me clarify that question. So this facility, this, this property is zone general retail, and is still subject to zoning regulations, which do not allow for bars. So general retail does not allow for bars. So we still have the ability, we retain the ability to limit bars from moving in there. Any facility that has more than fifty-one percent of something other than alcohol would be allowed to move in there.
But in essence, what's happening is, we're not just making an approval for Pizzeria Nomad, we're making an approval for that entire property.
That's correct.
That's, that's what I'm hearing.
Is that correct, Anthony?
That's correct, sir.
And, and did the Emerald Independent School District, were they, were they in favor of this variance?
No, ma'am. They are not in favor of the issuance of this variance.
Okay. And then for the, for the new Toot and Totem going in across the street, did they, were they in favor of that particular variance? And I realize that that's already been approved.
Yes, ma'am. So looking in the history of that location, I, I did look at the history of the files on how it was approved. It, it appears, looking back on that, on that application, that the notification to the school was made directly to Coronado Elementary School, not the administration of A I S D. So I'm not sure if they ever were notified that this was going in front of council.
Okay.
Correct, correctly, I guess, is a, a better way of saying that.
Let me ask you, city manager, do you understand that, that anytime the school system has opposed something, we've always gone along with them?
We have never approved anything over the opposition of any person inside, or any entity inside the notification range, and that includes A I S D. Anytime A I S D has ever opposed an application for a variance, it is, it has not been approved.
And council, I think it's important, just to kind of understand the history, we've only ever approved one, two, three, four, five, six, six in the history of our issuance of these licenses. So this would be number seven that council has, has ever seen.
This is on the agenda to have a public hearing, so in order to have a public hearing now, and then see about a motion later?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone to speak in favor, against, or on this subject? Liberty, Liberty Powers, you've already spoken. You can speak again if you like.
Uh, yes, sir. I, um, when I applied for this variance, I, I wasn't aware that it would impact the entire property. And also, I did send the formal T A B C letter to the Coronado Elementary to notify them of our intent, so.
You did or did not send it to them? What did you say?
I, I did send a, a formal C A B C letter to Coronado Elementary Director directly, just notifying them of our intention.
But not to the school system?
Uh, yes, sir. That was ignorance on my part. I, I didn't know how the process works.
Okay. Is there anyone else on here that wants to speak during the public hearing?
If you are on the Zoom to speak on this topic, please press the raise hand button or press star nine on your phone at this time. Mayor Protem, I do not see anybody wishing to speak.
We'll close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion if someone wants to do so.
Mayor Protem, I move to deny the approval of ordinance number seventy-eight eighty-nine in the vicinity of Thirty Fourth and Georgia Street, and that's based on the fact that the entire strip center would be able to have alcohol on the premises.
Motion on the floor.
And I'll second it, and I, I'm really sorry for the very same reasons that Frida Powell has mentioned, and also for the fact of, as a council, we've never gone against another entity like this before. And I, I have to honor the, the request of Emerald Independent School District.
Right, and, and I, I do as well.
And it, it, I'm really, really sorry that this is the way that this is going. The one that really caught me by surprise, honestly, Anthony, was the fact of, once this happens, that entire property is now underneath that, and it's forever.
Right, and that's, that's, I was not aware of that as well until, until now.
Speaking for myself, I, I will go along with the most. Speaking for myself, I, I will go along with the motion that's made mainly because the school system has opposed it. So I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, could you repeat the motion again, Frieda Powell?
Yes, sir, Mayor Pro Tem. I move to deny the ordinance, I move to deny ordinance number seventy-eight eighty-nine in the vicinity of thirty-fourth and Georgia Street.
Okay, so that's the motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion passes three zero. Thank you very much for the discussion. We'll go on to item three C in the non-consent items. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor Pro Tem, we have in front of us a documentation, a resolution that would suspend the effective date of Atmos Energy Statement of Intent to modify the rate of gas in our region. Historically, we have suspended these on a frequent basis in every situation where a grip filing has been made, a gas rate infrastructure program filing has been made to allow the city's attorneys, we work with a attorney expert in this field to represent the cities in our area, to work with both Atmos and the P U C, the Public Utilities Commission, to arrive at what an appropriate rate increase to cover the cost for the infrastructure that they've installed to be able to provide the gas to our region. But it's, it's very rarely is it exactly what is requested by either the gas provider Atmos or by the cities. It is a negotiated number that then makes an appropriate settlement for all parties. So we have put in front of you a resolution that would suspend, as we have done on numerous occasions before, the effective date of the rate case, and we push it into February. That would give the attorneys and the cities and the company the appropriate amount of time to be able to work through the item to have a well-baked, fully thought-out number in front of council for approval. So that would push us out to February second as our new deadline if we suspend at this point. And I could go into a lot of detail about what the percentage rate increases and things like that are, but until we have gone through this process, I think it's premature to really get into that because history would indicate that we're going to modify that significantly or at least to some extent.
Do we need a motion here?
Yes, sir, we would need a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
And if you have any questions, I or Brian McWilliams, our city attorney, can answer those questions. We are a relatively small municipal group, unlike in electric rate cases where we have dozens of cities. In this situation, we have four. It is Amarillo, Lubbock, Dalhart, and Channing.
We need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Go.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the resolution suspending the effective date of November fourth, twenty twenty, for ninety days in connection with Atmos Energy Statement of Intent filed on or about September thirtieth, twenty twenty, with the cities of Amarillo, Channing, Dalhart, and Lubbock, to the effective date of February second, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion on the floor and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion passes three zero. Okay, item D, consider approval purchase of property eight fifty Martin Road. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. With the advent of coronavirus and all the activity going on around that, our Public Health Department has significantly increased the number of personnel that are working there and the number of things and the pace of operations over the course of the last seven or eight months. To that end, and with using funds that are available to us, we would propose that we buy the building next door to our current public health facility in order for them to be able to expand their operations, both now and into the foreseeable future. This building is roughly seventeen thousand square feet. I want to go ahead and hand it to Deputy City Manager Kevin Starbuck to walk us through the details of that building. You can see our building in the background that we currently own, and this building in the foreground is the one that we would buy. Kevin?
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members. This is an item to consider approval of the purchase of the property at eight fifty Martin Road. You can see it here in the picture. It used to be utilized as the Regent's Health Network facility until they relocated in twenty eighteen to their new facility at effectively thirty-fourth and Rosso Sage. Stephanie, if you go to the next slide. Current, current ownership of this building is Lazy S Ranches L L C. It has been listed through Thomason Scout Realtors. The basic information, as I mentioned, it was used as clinical space for Regent's Health Network. It was built in two thousand six. It was vacated in twenty eighteen. It is a sixteen thousand nine hundred square foot facility or building that includes twenty-four exam rooms plus pharmacy, dental, and medical office space. The purchase price was agreed upon at one point five million plus closing costs, assuming city council approval, and the funding source will be public health disrip funds. And the disrip is the delivery system reform and incentive program or payment program. And we have about eight million dollars in funding in that program that has been acquired over, over the last several years. So we are, we are looking to use one point five million of that program to, to fund the purchase of this building. It's ideally located right next door to the current public health facility at one thousand Martin Road and would allow us to not only consolidate our COVID operations that public health currently is administering into that facility, but for the, the long term, will allow for the expansion of public health operations to provide much more in-depth healthcare services to the public in, in, in some of our disadvantaged areas of the community where we don't have a lot of public or healthcare access in those areas. So certainly advantageous on a number of different fronts, but this is the basics of, of the proposed deal, and with city council approval, we would move forward with finalizing the purchase.
Any questions from the council? Have an entertaining motion.
Yes, I move to approve the purchase of the property located at eight fifty Martin Road from Lazy S Ranches L L C in the amount of one point five million plus closing costs using public health delivery system reform and incentive payment funding.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes three zero. And then item E, consider approval Center City Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone One Developer Agreement. Mr. City Manager?
I'm Mayor Pro Tem, this is an item that council has seen previously, both in executive session and, and this would be a consideration of a recommendation from tiers number one for a property tax abatement through twenty thirty-six. To present the item, we have our Managing Director of Planning and Development Services, Andrew Freeman. Andrew?
Yes, sir. So this agreement is with Sharpened Iron Studios, which you're all familiar with. Amarillo Economic Development Corporation also had a agreement with them earlier in this year that you've seen. This one is specifically with Center City Tiers Number One that helps manage the downtown district as far as the joint agreements with the different taxing entities. This agreement would be for a ninety percent property tax rebate through twenty thirty-six as well as a fifty thousand dollar reimbursement grant at project completion. Just to recap, some of the tiers number one goals, it's hotel development, urban residential development, ballpark, family entertainment venues, and then I've highlighted specifically the office commercial retail category, which touches on developing new square footage of this category over the thirty-year period. And it also specifically mentions rehabilitation of existing structures, which this agreement would pertain to. Here is highlighting the project location. It is located on the south side of the Amarillo College Downtown Campus, where you see Nixon Gym in the building to the north. It is also going to take place on the south parking lot as well, which I'll show you a concept plan, concept plan here in a few minutes. So this is just a zoomed-in book version. Basically, the line is going to be right here in the middle of the building. The north side is going to be the innovation hub, and then the south side will be this film studio project. So just some background project information, the project is Sharpened Iron Studios. The tiers was requested to assist with facilitating the redevelopment of the existing building and new construction into a television, video, and movie production studio. The studio is also coordinating with Amarillo College to launch a film and production art school that's going to have associate's degree and certifications included with that program to really balance the education and the film studio. The redevelopment of this project meets the following goals of the Downtown Strategic Action Plan, developing commercial square footage, attracting new commercial uses. This would be diversifying the economy as this is an industry that we currently have in place at this level. It would continue to build upon the higher education presence in downtown in order to create new opportunities for development synergies. I think they would coordinate a lot with the innovation hub as far as new technologies in the film industry being right next door, and they would also continue efforts to rehabilitate historic buildings, which includes Nixon Gym, which is a part of the original Amarillo High School. The property was built in nineteen thirty and currently serves the Amarillo College's Downtown Campus, as I mentioned, and the plan improvements include redevelopment of forty-three thousand square feet of an existing building as well as construction of a new thirty thousand square foot standalone building on the southern lot. Here's just a quick, a quick look at the concept plan. The one on the left is the main existing structure and Nixon Gym to the south, highlighted in the red there, and then the one on the right is the thirty thousand square foot soundstage that would be located on the standalone parking lot. As far as the request specifically, as mentioned, it's a property tax rebate through twenty thirty-six at the ninety percent level, as well as a grant of fifty thousand. The anticipated first reimbursement would likely be June first, twenty twenty-three, based on twenty twenty-two tax statement, and the project is anticipated to be completed and open in summer of twenty twenty-two. As far as action taken to date, Center City met on October eighth, twenty twenty, and voted six zero one to approve the agreement. The one extension was the Amarillo College represented because they are leasing the property to the applicant, and they're actually voting on that tonight at their Board for Regent's meeting. And then we also presented the agreement to Potter County Commissioners Court yesterday morning to get their feedback, and they were very interested in the project and spoke favorably of it. One comment we received, which I, which I, why I went into more detail on the goals and objections of downtown, when I presented to the Commissioners Court, I mentioned that it is developing commercial square footage within the zone and attracting new commercial uses, but I also wanted to touch on those other categories that were mentioned in the plan that this project really fits into. But with, with that said, we've also got Sean Doherty, the President of Sharpened Iron Studios. If you have any specific questions for him, he is available as well. If not, I'm also available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
What questions does anyone have? No questions?
Mayor Pro Tem, I do not have any questions.
I don't either.
I don't either. Any other comments, Andrew?
No, sir.
Fairly motion.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the Center City Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One Developer Agreement for Sharp Iron Studios L L C located at thirteen fourteen South Oak Street, also with a fifty thousand dollar reimbursable grant at project completion and a ninety percent property tax rebate through twenty thirty-six.
Second.
Motion on the floor is made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes three zero.
Thank you, council members.
Yes, sir. Thank you for bringing that to Amarillo.
Yes, we look forward to seeing what becomes of all of this.
Thank you, and I want to invite all the council and staff to come and take a tour. Let me walk you through the facilities and show you what we're going to do. Just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That completes our agenda. So meeting is adjourned. Thank you.